Good to see you.
What's your face? What's your face?
Hey, ladies.
Oh, these guys are here.
I was gonna say.
How was it?
Who?
Yeah.
It's not open, right?
Is it still going?
Yeah, it's still going.
Still going. That's some dedication there.
All right, we'll get you in and out then.
Yes.
I just put a mint in my mouth, you want one?
Thank you, Ms. Paul.
I'm gonna move the students in presentation before confidential.
Is Mark coming?
No, he's at Powderpuff. All right, I think we have two. We're good? Everybody good? I will call us to order. We all rise for the flag salute.
Head of the game here, bud.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we all remain standing for a moment of reflection for all those in harm's way and all of our military at home and abroad? Thank you. You may be seated. Statement of Vance Notice. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting in the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 6, 2025. Such schedule and notice of meeting is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools. It was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January 7, 2025. It was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 8, 2025. I direct that this announcement be entered into the meeting minutes of this meeting. And we'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Orzillo?
Okay. And just for public information, I'm gonna move our confidential session to after our student liaison reports and our superintendent reports. And with that, I'll take a motion for the per of the minutes, 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board? Nope. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call on that.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And I'm moving confidential session to after our reports and discussions. And with that, do you have any communications and petitions for superintendent or board members? Anyone? No? Okay. And with that, we will take our student liaisons. Thank you for coming.
Everyone, it's really nice to see you all again. So, for past events, we had the National English Honor Society induction on October 29th. It was a really beautiful ceremony, and we had a lot of new members. We had the Math Honor Society induction on November 18th, which was short but very sweet. And from the Guidance Department, we had resounding success at the Trade Fair on November 12th. We had 35 vendors and companies present to 300 students from Morris, Warren, and Sussex County, and 55 Mount Olive seniors who were interested in skilled trade and apprenticeships attended. Every senior with the high schools had at least one meeting with a guidance counselor to discuss post-high school goals. And as of now, 168 students have submitted 2,900 college applications.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah. In regards to AP exams, as of now, 938 AP exams are being ordered for 391 students, so it's a lot. We had five students who were committed for the National Marriage Scholarship Program. They were Angela Davis, Oliver Hune, Cassandra Mazina, Jace Ona, and Sydney Price, and we're all really proud of them. Snowline tickets were also sold from November 10 through the 13th, and the dance is coming up on the 6th. So, we're all very, very excited, we're planning. And Mean Girls went spectacularly. I don't know if you went, but I went, and it was absolutely amazing, they did an amazing job. And the Mount Olive Robotics Team hosted the first Lego League qualifier on November 22nd, and the kids all had a really great time. We had teams from all over New Jersey, it was great, and we're hosting the state championships on December 15th. And the Air Force Junior ROTC Drill Team performed in West Orange on November 22nd in the drill competition, and they won first place for armed flight regulation, second place for color guard, and third place for athletic challenge. So, a lot, we're very, very proud of them. And we had one senior, Jace Ona, who won best armed drill commander with a perfect score of 50, and it's his second time receiving this award. So, we're all very, very impressed. And the student by literacy registration just finished.
Hello, everyone. I'm Isabel Asara, the Student Council Treasurer. So, for athletics, Mr. Griswachs won the NJSI AA Community Coach of the Season. Boy Socrates made it to the state sectional finals on November 14th, and we are so very proud of them. Kendall Pizarroso raced in the meet of champs at Holmdel on November 15th. Some winter sports have started, but majority of them will start after Thanksgiving break. Competition cheer qualified for the 2025 UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship at Walt Disney World Resort in Orlando, Florida. Coming up, we have Powderpuff, which is happening tonight. It's the juniors versus the seniors. Rogue Kappa induction is on December 4th. SAT and ACT registration is happening currently for juniors, and the deadline is January 30th. SAT registration is...
Is it on?
No, the actual SAT.
Okay. SAT is on March 18th, and the ACT is on March 11th. And Winter Band and Choral Concert is on December 10th, and the Winter Orchestra Concert is on December 17th.
Do you have any questions for us?
Who's winning? Who's winning the Powderpuff game right now?
I think seniors, but the juniors are making some really good plays. We're doing good, we're doing good.
Who's your coaches?
Um, we have, as far as I know, Justin Bullock, because we have some of the football players that are coaching.
Nice, okay. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Happy Thanksgiving, go back to the game.
I hope you have a really great Thanksgiving break and spend some time with your families.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Jackie Bello, who's Director of Student Support Services and Programming. She will be doing our annual report on our student safety data system, known as SSDS, to report all incidences of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and HIB incidents. Ms. Bello.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. This is a report that I deliver twice per year. So, the reporting period I will deliver on tonight is from January 2025 through June 2025, so the second half of last year. And... Why do this every time? As Dr. Banjim mentioned, there are several pieces of information that are reported. So, this is a state requirement for all public schools in the state of New Jersey that we must report any serious acts of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse. That's one part of the SSDS system. And then the other part is collecting data on harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, it's investigations, trainings, and programs. So, both the response and the proactive side. Okay. So, the first part will be the SSDS system, violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse. So, these are our numbers, and I'll explain a little bit as you look from each of the different schools. It gives a breakdown. So, the first column you see is incident total. It's a little deceptive that SSDS collects it this way because it not only includes the other columns, the violence, the vandalism, substances, and weapons, but it also includes any founded incidents of HIB. So, if we do an investigation and it doesn't meet the definition of HIB, that's not what counts towards this incident total, just the founded incidents. And then the other incidents leading to removal are separate. So, what that means is students, incidents of students being suspended for something that was not violence, vandalism, substances, or weapons. So, things that count for violence are things like assault, fight. The SSDS guidance system gives specific guidance that a fight is not just a back-and-forth shoving match that occurs kind of quickly and stops right away. It's a real physical altercation. It gives some guidance on that. And then, of course, some more awful offenses, including simple threat and criminal threat. And then also vandalism. You can see what that encompasses: arson, computer trespass, damage to property, false public alarm, theft, trespass. So, these are, you know, some serious incidents. There are some cases where things are repeated. So, for example, it could be one incident that covers a variety of topics at once. Doesn't happen very often, but once in a while. And then our harassment, intimidation, bullying numbers. So, these are all of our incidents that we investigated for that second half of the year, January through June. So, that's the alleged number, and then the confirmed number. So, again, a large number of HIB investigations being conducted. We're looking into a whole lot, and we're finding that a lot of it is common conflict, but sometimes serious conflict nonetheless. These numbers, last year's numbers in total, were slightly lower than the HIB numbers the year before. And then for programs, we have such a variety of programs in all the different schools. So, this is something that's occurring, ongoing throughout the school year, every day, in different formats. So, we might have different clubs and groups of students who are working on different programs. We might have whole classroom lessons either being done by school counselors or by the teachers. We might have school-wide assembly programs, school-wide character ed programs. So, you might look up there and see certain names that belong to certain elementary schools and not for others. So, examples are like Shields of Honor, that's a sand shore character ed program. They're going to call it something different, you know, at Mountain View or CMS. So, I didn't list everything from every school because I'm trying to give kind of a cross-section. But we do work on things like kindness ambassadors at all five, all four elementary schools. That's something with the fifth graders. It's a special leadership program to help them spread some anti-bullying messages, some community-building activities. There's, of course, things like caught being good and recognition for character traits each month. November is always gratitude for Thanksgiving. And then there's things like One Book One School initiatives that really work on common themes of some anti-bullying mixed in with whatever the context is of the story. That's always a great program because it gets all the students talking about the thing, the same thing. We have lead program done by the Mount Olive Police Department still. So, just a variety. We do weekly wellness meetings to look at, you know, any students that might be struggling with attendance or friendships or, you know, being wrapped up in some HIB investigations. We do those meetings with counselors and administrators to help support those students, but to also analyze what we're doing as we're doing it. And then we have some examples of secondary programs. So, this is middle school and high school combined. So, one of the biggest, a couple of the biggest ones I tried to list on top. We do have a teen mental health first aid program at the high school that we're pretty proud of. We just found out that two teachers have been recognized to speak at a national conference. So, they're very excited. They really lead the charge with teen mental health first aid. They were just very passionate about it. Taught it last year.
Ms. Jackie Bello there, that's a huge honor. So, two of our staff members at the high school submitted a proposal to present at the National Council for Mental Well-Being in Denver, Colorado. And we just found out today that their proposals were chosen, and that was based upon the work that they're doing at the high school.
Yeah, that's Melissa Grossenstein and Travis Hubert. They're just champions for this program. They got trained, they did a lot of training, and then they opted to do some extra training. So, they're a great support for that program, but that's for 10th graders. We do run it every year, and they're excited about to get it started for this year as well. Last year, we also had our David Nash Parent Series. For those who know, David Nash is an attorney for the state of New Jersey. He does a lot of consulting, work with HIB prevention and response. And then we're also, well, this is last year, Rutgers Positive Behavior Supports in Schools. We were doing it at the high school. We're now doing it at the middle school as well. So, that's research, evidence-based, positive behavior support programs to promote anti-bullying. We have constant HIB refresher meetings with admin team. We talk about case law. We talk about PD that we've been to. So, there's all types of different activities too. Again, with students, when they get older, a lot of it is their voice has to be at the forefront. So, a lot of the clubs that they're involved in are the ones leading the charge with some of these programs. But then things like the Lip Dub that we know Mr. Stansberry was so excited about, and it really was a great video. But there's a lot of team building behind the scenes that goes into that. So, it's not just about making a promo video. It's really about the team building and the students representing the different groups. And then the high school too likes to send out a CARES calendar. So, there's a few, a few things, and this is only a few. I really couldn't name everything. We'd be here for a very long time. And then lastly, this is some of the district-wide HIB prevention programs and trainings that we did last year as well. So, we have no place for hate in all of the K-8 schools. Again, the Rutgers Bog Center with the Positive Behavior Supports. We always do trainings for staff with HIB policy and procedure every year. We had a group called Joy Roots come in to do some great trauma-informed practices for teachers and staff to do some PD on that. Of course, Superintendent Spotlight, we had a social media use night where we gave some information to parents based on some recent research from a few novels that have been out, a few research books, and some David Nash training. That, for me, was the highlight of last year because he was really able to dig in with us and look at our programs and procedures and either give the stamp of approval or say, "Did you think about trying it this way?" So, he had some really good feedback for us that we appreciated.
And I certainly want to add here that, you know, this data was from previous spring. However, Ms. Bello and the rest of the staff has done remarkable job even this school year. You know, she led the superintendent spotlight last week in which we talked about, you know, bullying HIB and helping parents navigate conflict with their child. So, we had a nice turnout last week. So, thank you for all the families who came out because certainly it's those small conversations that allow people to have dialogue and ask the questions if they want clarity, and also in some cases get affirmation that, you know, what their child is going through is also the experience of others and how we can help support that community. So, thank you for all that programming that continues to happen this school year.
Thank you. And we did talk about code of conduct too because even when something is not a founded incident of HIB, that doesn't mean that nothing is done. We do go through the code of conduct, and that's a variety of things from discipline infractions through restorative practice and counseling to help remediate that behavior so it doesn't continue to occur. Any questions?
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Ms. Bello. Excellent presentation. Real quick, I know we still use Hipster, and I know within that program, I'd be interested, and I'm sure you looked at this and everyone's looked at it, where those founded HIBs are happening or taking place. I know that system can break that down and say, "Through the hallways or unstructured times." And then it would be looked to us as a board to say, "Where do we need to support that more from a budgetary standpoint?" Especially at the middle school, although, you know, the middle school's numbers have drastically come down over the past year or two. It's a testament to you, Ms. Wilkie. But where else can we, you know, put that money to get the best bang for our buck at? So, I know, I don't know if people realize that we can break that down to see where the most of the allegations are happening and if it really is. So, I just want to speak on that a little bit.
Yeah, it's a great point. It's called a Hot Spot Locator. That's the report that we run in Hipster. And in our school climate and safety team meetings that we do quarterly, the anti-bullying specialists review that information with the teachers and the parents who are on that committee as well as the administrators. And we do take action right away when we can. And I know, Mrs. Wilkie, you know, this was big for her. She moved staff to the hall, the stairways in passing time because we were finding that things were being reported on the stairways. And then we also have stands, you know, for hallway monitors in the middle school, which is really nice. One of our security staff built them himself, and they look beautiful. But they're also, you know, nice stations for everyone. So, that, that's a great point. That's exactly the kind of work that we're doing, you know, throughout the year to make sure because it's not always about whether or not it's a founded HIB. It's about our kids getting upset with each other over something, and how do we help?
And I think also it's typically the unstructured areas sometimes that often are the culprits when, you know, disagreements arise. And certainly both at the middle school and high school, we introduced Smart Pass in which also allows us to see who's in the hallway and also prevent potential interactions because we know some students are having beef with one another. I just aged myself, I know. I don't know what the proper terminology now, but I say beef.
Call it conflict.
Conflict, right? And so, with that, you know, in some cases, we've probably prevented things from taking place because they're not allowed to be interacting with one another. And I know from the middle school perspective, the volume in the hallways, you know, in between classes, the number of kids in the bathroom has dramatically, you know, decreased. I know the custodial staff are quite happy that there's not much going on in the restrooms because we know who's there and how long they're there. And certainly, that's something that, you know, we, I've had many conversations with students, and certainly we have a lot of leeway with that program, but it comes down to maintaining the safety of our students. And knowing where they are and, you know, who they're interacting with is really critical. But to your point, it's that unstructured time that we're trying to really address, especially at the middle school and high school time. Elementary is a little different, you know. There's really not much unstructured time.
And I think too, it's a testament to the administration, teachers, especially at the middle school and high school. You're dealing with a sheer number of volume of students, right? You know, you put that many people together, you put that many adults together. If you put 10 adults together, they're gonna act worse than those kids. I know the rumors in our town, I know we as board members, I'm not gonna speak for everyone, I know myself as some other board members, hear the same thing over again, that the behavior at the schools, at the middle school and high school are out of control, the kids are out of control, and that's furthest thing from the truth. I mean, you have that many kids together in that, in a confined space. There's gonna be arguments, there's gonna be conflict. There's gonna be, and it's our job as well as, you know, educating students, which is the primary job of school districts, but as well as trying to help them navigate those conflicts. So, I just think it's a testament to everybody in the district for what they do.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just wanted to add to that a little bit, that one of the pieces, especially at the elementary where we saw some numbers. Ms. Bello, you've really hit, hit home and emphasized several times that it's not just about, "Oh, I got you," or "You're in trouble." It's about giving the students the tools to understand that conflict or the use of some of the language and other, you know, incidents that are occurring. And that we have to, we as a board, for those in the public, do review all of the HIB reports that come through, those, and then the decisions that are made, and we support our administration in those decisions. And there are some that are founded, and parents do have that opportunity to appeal it. And then from there, there are other legal opportunities for them, correct?
That's right, yeah. So, they can appeal it to the Board of Ed, and then they can go beyond that as well if they don't agree with the decision.
And then the commissioner also then makes the ultimate decision after the OAL, right?
That's right.
I also just like to thank the boards. You know, certainly, we invited David Nash last summer, and the board had, you know, many training with him to get more, you know, information about the HIB process. We are inviting Mr. Nash again this coming summer. So, we're looking at to ensure that continuity because it's also really critical. Everyone on the team, right, has a knowledge base of, you know, what the ins and outs of the HIB law is so that we can engage in, you know, productive conversations. So, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, I say thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bello.
And since we're still in reports and discussions, do we have any boards, committee, and our parent association liaison reports?
Can I chime in one thing? I just wanted to mention that we had our first long-range planning committee last Monday. Thank you for all the community members who attended. We had a nice group of people from all parts of the community, whether it be parents, just community members, the mayor, town council, you know, we had people, staff members engaging conversation. It was our first step to really looking at the needs of the districts. And so, we engaged in really fruitful conversation. And so we engaged in really fruitful conversations as to what they, their baseline, you know, we kind of did the teaching model, like establishing their understanding so they really shared their perspectives about infrastructure and their thought process on the buildings. So we're gonna, our next steps are gonna be visiting all the buildings, getting a firsthand knowledge of, to see what's going on, and really coming together to see what the direction the districts wants to take. I, you know, Ms. Betten was in person, so thank you for that, as well as Dr. Giordano. So I hope you found the meeting to be rewarding. And Jeannie, right? No, Beth, that's right. Sorry, I apologize.
It went very well. Yes. You know, it went very well. It was a very collaborative, nice discussion to see the first steps on what we need to do, what we think we need to do. And we're gonna move from there.
And do we have any, with that, anything else, Dr. Banja?
I'm good, sorry.
No, you're good. Do we have any board subcommittee or parent teacher association reports? Nope. Anyone in public? No? No? Okay. President's report? I have nothing to report. So with that, before we go to public comment, we're actually gonna go into confidential session. So I'll take a motion for recess into confidential session.
Still moved?
Second.
Second. And roll call, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Be resolved that the board meet in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege, pending or anticipated litigation, confidential pupil matters, real estate matters. Be it further resolved that the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We are in closed session.
We're back, and we'll take a roll call, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Present.
Present.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Here.
All right, and with that, we are back. Public comments on action items. We will open up for public comments. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. And please state your name and address for the record.
So the three criteria...
Name and address.
Name and address, Mr. Capone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tim Capone, Highfield Road. The three criteria for a HIB. My question, and related to the affirming or the acknowledgement of receipts, is we just saw a presentation on that. Are the HIB lowers... Are the HIB numbers lower when you choose not to investigate a reported HIB? Is that going to appear on this or not? So that's my first question. And the second question would be, what happens to HIBs that you choose not to investigate when they're reported?
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's see, Amy.
I'll...
Second public comment?
Yep. And we'll have you come up at the end. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close out public comment on action items.
We're going to respond at the end of the second comment section?
You can respond now.
All right, I just didn't know. Just, I think, and Ms. Bello would know more, I don't think we're in the practice, or we're still practicing, that if a parent gives us a form, or a staff member, or student stating they feel like they are harassed and attempting to bully, we investigate that.
Correct.
And that's for a fact, okay. And then whether it's founded as an HIB or not, there's still consequences. If it's a code of conflict, there's consequences. If it's founded, and depending on the age population, it's age appropriate. You know, there's some counseling involved about, you know, better peer relationships, especially with elementary school kids. I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just make a comment. I want to say that I commend Mr. Capone for coming up and actually speaking to us about this. However, I also have to commend Mrs. Bello because of the amount of work that she has done to make sure this exact thing does not happen. She's been very open about it. So there may be a reason that something didn't go exactly the way you wanted legally. However, I can attest that we have been very thorough in this. I do really appreciate public speaking, because at least it's not an anonymous Facebook post that we can't do anything about. So I do want to appreciate that from you. But I totally disagree. I just, Mrs. Bello, you've been amazing during this whole process since you've been here. And I just had to say my piece.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the approval of Item 7 through... 11.1. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Dr. Giordano makes the motion. We have Ms. Fenton made a second. Do we have comments or questions from the board with relation to Item 7.1 all the way to 11.1? Nope, okay, seeing none. We will take a roll call, Ms. Shonan.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
I abstain from anything for Christian Humphrey and special education. Yes to everything else.
We're good? All right, with that, we will move to public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. And... Hi, Amy, I know you missed earlier for our report, so come on up.
She's a snitch. Hello, everybody. Sorry that I missed. I was listening on YouTube. I'm like, I miss my time. So, I'm Amy Marini. So I'll be reporting on my subcommittee, so for the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. Sorry, I haven't been here for a couple of weeks. But I do want to, I did want to report on September, on October and November, so I'll try to make it as short as possible. So for October CPAG meeting, I couldn't remember if we spoke before or after that, but I wanted to just share, we did have Mike Marata come to speak from the Assistive Technology Advocacy Center. He reviewed a ton of tools, as well as, you know, federal laws and New Jersey laws, and just all of these different things that were just ridiculously important for families to hear. Talked about transition tool. He shared about the free resources that are through the ATIA Learning Center. He talked about the Lending Center for Assistive Technology Apps and Devices that anyone in the state can request the device or application to be shared for three weeks. And then we talked about the AT Act Program in New Jersey with the at4nj.com. It was just so much, so much. One of the things that I was like, my own takeaway from a CPAG perspective, and I was like, kind of frustrated that for ourselves, this was a parent-only meeting, and there's so there was no staff there. But we did discuss the models of assistive technology delivery, and the one that really strikes out is the capacity model with who in the school is the expert, and then who in related services is either finds it as a niche, or like it, you know, or something to become the expert, as well as how that person or that group of folks helps to turn key as the children move through the district, so that it's not like, oh, only this school knows how to use that app, and this teacher. And then when they move to the middle school, well, who knows? Or into the high school, or whatever. And so it was really interesting to hear him speak about that. And it was just, I know that we use records, but he was phenomenal, like phenomenal. And so then CAC was like two days later, and they talked about a bunch of preschool-inclusive practices. They discussed the survey that was sent out to parents and educators and staff about the revision of the special education code. I did update the links for the October, so that Excel document that I sent out to you guys is updated for October's. There's a lot more links. In November, it seems as though they have changed their way that they share those things, and the code, the links are not available to the public, which is a big bummer. But they, in October CAC, they also talked about the self-assessment for the NJTSS tool, and then they just talked a lot about the INRS, like how to refer, what the steps are, all that stuff. November CPAG meeting, we had 15 attend. We had a really great update from special services, as well as introduction of the two new supervisors, as well as some other staff within the buildings. We had a lot of really great conversation about all the things that are being offered within the district. And then we had a really great presentation about, from Arturo Rodriguez, and discussing the universal literacy screeners and the process in Mount Olive for monitoring children that are at risk for really any, but how they catch kids to make sure that there are no literacy or whatever. I'm totally botching it right now, but...
And just letting you know, Mr. Rodriguez is our supervisor of intervention gifted and oral language, just so you know.
Yeah, and he was really great, like very, like, as a mom from a, like, because my daughter's at a district place in Mount Olive, and so I have an eight-year-old that's actually like kind of going through this stuff. So it was really helpful for me. Then I attended CAC, where my brain went to mush. And so November's CAC, like I said before, the links, they don't share the same way, so that was really disappointing, but I did try to share what I could. They did talk about, the main topic was disproportionality, which was very mind-twisting for me. Maybe Mrs. O'Neal can kind of pipe in how that speaks, but they also did talk about the post-school success in adult programs, and talked about how DVRS can be, so the Division for Vocational and Rehabilitation Services should be involved, starting at 14 years old at IEP meeting discussions, that, you know, actually, I'm going to see if they can come and speak at a CPAG, because I think it would be really helpful. Because there's just a whole lot of transition that starts to happen, starting around 14, and so really getting the vocational stuff involved and everybody. But it was really interesting to hear that there is a counselor assigned to every single high school in the state of New Jersey that will work with the staff and the parents and the students on their transition plan, so.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Anyone else?
I could be it.
Come on up, Eda. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, esteemed guests, and the Mount Olive community. My name is Gita Vogel, and I live at 48 Junegrass Way, Panther Valley, Alamoche, New Jersey. I am the certified field rep from PSA and representing Moesa. Thank you for being here. Another little factoid, if you can learn about me, David Nash is my boss. I am taking a moment to wish you all a grateful and safe Thanksgiving. I'm going out on sick leave until January, but will return after hip replacement. I thank the current board for supporting the students and staff of the Mount Olive School District. It's always a pleasure to see the various groups of students honored before you on the many occasions this past year. The recognition is rewarding to them and validating to the staff who supervised their many activities that brought them here. Likewise, I appreciate the courtesy and support you have always demonstrated for me and the organization I represent. Though names and faces change in service to the Mount Olive community from within the Board of Education, the collective mission is the same, no matter, as a Mount Olive resident. Clearly, it is a mission and responsibility to which you are all committed, regardless of official titles. At this moment, I wish Kevin Stansberry continued positivity, and I wanted to say, be safe, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Huge speedy recovery.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tim Capone, Highfield Road. So one of the responses I got to my questions from the last time was that at least five of you, as board members, decided to use taxpayer money to appeal a HIB decision to try and ensure that one of our students was found guilty of a HIB after you were overturned by the administrative law judge. At least five of you, okay? That it wasn't her decision, it's not the board attorney, but that, according to her, at least five of you made that decision. So this is some... So this is something that, you know, well, you can sit here and say that this is your practice. I'm going to continue to come up, and we're going to have to, you know, again, I could resend the email that shows that you don't open HIBs when you're told that they occur, because I have it in writing. Okay? So that's going to continue to be a concern as this happens over and over again. But the newest one was, so we'll open with this question. If I requested budget information, would I be denied budget information because I'm a parent? Okay? Does FERPA apply to me as a parent asking for budget information? Because apparently, that's the reasoning that someone is giving for why I can't have a teacher's schedule, right? Is that parents are allowed to have information of student records, and apparently nothing else. Okay? So, and then, we've had other administrators, they're all claiming that a teacher's schedule is confidential personnel information. Okay? Do your teacher's schedules have social security numbers on it? Home addresses? Health benefit information? I don't think that they do. So a denial to a parent quoting FERPA, okay, is a deflect. There's no connection between those two things. And from a staff schedule standpoint, what would possibly be on a staff's schedule other than their name, the classes they teach, the period they teach it, and which part of that would be confidential personnel information? Now, we also had an issue, okay, in regards to how you calculate GPA. So if a student drops down a level from honors to CP, and they've done honors-level work in the marking period, how do you credit that for their GPA? You credit it as if it's college prep. You don't give them and award them the credit and the GPA that it is that they've earned for the work that they've completed. So there's a question of fairness and ethics associated with that. Now, this goes into, I made an Oprah request, okay? Your Oprah custodian won't identify themselves. So my other question is, who is your Oprah custodian? Who are we paying to fill Oprah's? Okay? Because you remember, the last time, I guess it was about a year ago, I requested HIB information, and you told me I could have that, okay, after things were redacted. The lowest-level employee that you said would redact it, or was capable of redacting it, was Jackie Bellows. And I believe the total was somewhere in the neighborhood of $47,000 is what you said that I would have to pay in order to be able to access that information. So transparency is something some of you ran on. It certainly was an issue the last time around with some of the board actions, and it appears to continue to be an issue.
Mr. Capone, can I ask why you want the teacher's schedule?
This is not a back-and-forth conversation. Mr. Capone can make his comments, and then we'll respond where needed after the end.
Okay? So I don't know if you've published this yet, but what is the date of the auditor's presentation for this year? Okay? And will the auditor be answering questions from the public, or just from the board? Thank you.
Can I make a statement? Dr. Banja and Mr. Kurifi, I have a security concern for our staff as to what the purpose of knowing our staff's schedule and whereabouts are at all times. So I'd like to make that on record, that we are to keep our staff safe at all times. Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Capone, this is not a conversation. You can make new comments if you'd like.
I'm going to make new comments.
Name and address for the record? It's a new statement.
Yeah, Tim Capone, Highfield Road, okay? If you're saying that you don't release that information, okay, that's not true, because it's in real time. So you can't piecemeal it and say it's available to every parent, okay, from that, to know each one of those schedules, because then it's released. It's public record. Everybody has access to that.
All right, we'll keep on moving then. Anyone else from the public? Thank you. We'll move to old business. Members of the board may comment on any item or topic that was previously discussed by the board. Anyone? All right, none. We'll move to new business. New business, members of the board may introduce any new item or topic of discussion for the board to consider. Anyone? Nope. All right, board comments. Members of the board may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Mr. Arthur, and Dr. Giordano?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to thank Ms. Bello once again for her presentation and the efforts put forward by our staff when it comes to our violence and vandalism report, HIB report, and keeping our students as safe as we possibly can in today's day and age. I'd also like a shout-out to Mr. Bosch and the cast and crew of Mean Girls. It was an excellent play, although not my cup of tea, per se, you know? But it was a very good play, and our students are very, 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 very talented.
Mr. Chou.
Yep, I'll ditto all of that, and then also, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a lovely break. Well-deserved, teachers and staff, and we'll see you guys next month.
And, Ms. Aquino? Ms. Fenton?
Just ditto what they said, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
And happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Please enjoy your time off. Ms. Figuera?
Ditto all of the above. Happy Thanksgiving. Have a great break.
And, Dr.-
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.